Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get the uh policy committee meeting started. It is five eighteen. So going off of our little month of clients for January, we completed twenty-three forty, but that has not been sent out yet because we wanna get the parental option form, policy twenty-three forty-five and twenty-three forty-five P, so that we can send them all out at once. Okay, so um if we flip over to the form, I know Ramona had some input on this, she'll be here at some point, but um let's pull that up. The only thing I'm questioning is hello. Happy New Year, we just started.
Okay.
Just so you know. We'll go ahead and get up and going.
Yeah.
When it gets clear, so if you want that to be good, that helps you see better.
I'll be, I don't think I'll be good.
Yeah.
What I was just saying, Ramona, is that policy twenty-three forty, which is the controversial issues and academic protection, we completed going through that last.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah. Um so we've moved on to the form because we wanna make sure that we've got policy twenty-three forty, the form, policy twenty-three forty-five, which is speakers in the classroom and school functions, and twenty-three forty-five P, which is controver- controversial speaker procedures. Send all of that out at once.
Okay.
So that everyone has all that information to ferret through. Um on the sex ed form, I'm just questioning the opt-in portion.
Yeah, there was something on it last time I read, but I remember, I didn't remember if we went back and fixed it or not.
We haven't yet, it's um, the top portion is opting out, just that child will remove from class indoor student activities um when instruction is given in the subject of ed- sex education and I understand that while the subject of sex education is being presented, my child will be provided with an alternative activity. And then the second half, if you wanna scroll down to the second half of the form.
Is all the statute says alternative activity?
I believe it so, let me see what that's.
I know it says alternate, but I, I thought it was uh, I don't know, some other word, but. How are you doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
How about you? Oh, I made it. It's always nice to have all that time off, you know, for holidays, but uh when you go back to work, you pay dearly for it.
Yes, yes, I've been paying for it all week.
Yeah.
Actually, just last two days.
Yeah.
Thirty-three sixteen eleven states it's excusing children from instruction in sex education. Does any parent or legal guardian who wishes to have his child excused from any planned instruction in sex education may do so upon filing a written request to the school district board of trustees, and the board of trustees shall make available the appropriate forms for such request. Alternative educational endeavors shall be provided for those excused.
Yeah, so it's not just an activity.
So um learning.
I mean, it just sounds really, you know, oh, you can't be in here, so you can go.
Play basketball.
Yeah, swing on the swings or.
So an alternate educational.
Now, whatever that uh.
Um alternative, what am I saying?
Or alternative learning.
Educational endeavors.
You wanna use that word, yeah.
You know, whether that be they're allowed to work on some project, they need to get done, you know, their own homework, whatever, but I don't think, I mean, it just sounded sorta hokey the way it was, in my opinion. If I have one of those, don't we know?
Okay, now where are we? Oh, maybe we need to add this to policy. Yep, it's already there, perfect, okay. Now, the second half is uh request that my child participate in class and or student activities when planned instruction is given in the subject of sex education. But then we go into um.
I see that.
The board.
It's updated, yeah.
Yeah, the board allows for, the board allows instruction in sex education to include abstinence, aids awareness, which we don't have to have anymore, I don't believe. Uh information regarding sexually transmitted disease, birth control, and general human sexuality. That's a problem.
Yeah, no.
Uh classroom instruction is intended to be factually presented, and while the opinions or moral judgments of any instructor is not the basis for this instruction, impartial viewpoints regarding both sides of various issues, such as abortion or birth control methods, may be provided. I don't do that.
No.
Do you, does it have to be this specific?
No, 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 absolutely not.
Then.
Yeah, you know, sometimes we can be so specific that we put ourselves in a corner, you know? But then sometimes we get complaints that we're too broad, but I think the statute is very clear. Although, you know, maybe the statute or the IDAPA rule or something made butt heads with the standard or what have you, but um the bottom line is, is the law supersedes all of those things.
Would it, would it be helpful to just say the board allows for instruction in sex education as, you know, mandated by the state of Idaho and the standards?
Yeah.
Parents have the right to review materials upon request?
Yeah.
With the district or teacher? Like you do for the SEL training for.
Well, you always have the right, parents always have the right to review the uh material all the time. Which I'm finding there are other local districts that are telling people they have to make like special concession and meet up, and I'm like, yeah, that's how the statute says.
There's, districts find loopholes everywhere.
Um, I think they could say something along the lines that the board just allows for instruction in sex education in um in alignment with, but alignment's not the word. Um alignment with the Idaho statute um.
Is it required by the Idaho statute?
No, it is not required, and then the sex ed um.
Well, the sex, sex education definition is sex education for the purpose of this act is defined as the study, excuse me, of the anatomy and the physiology of human reproduction.
I would just go with that.
But I don't know what IDAPA says.
Yeah, well.
That's what I was looking for.
Uh yeah, there is one in there, but um the, yeah, the sex ed also is very explicit on uh the study of that anatomy, physiology, blah blah blah, has to be in alignment with the house, the home, and the church, is what the statute says.
Oh, oh, huh.
So basically, if, you know, of course, the, the uh standards are contradictory to that.
Well, of course they are.
Um but uh.
Yeah, let me see here. Well, sixteen oh eight, yeah, this is Family Life and Sex Education, says the legislature of the state of Idaho believes that the primary responsibility for family life and sex education, including moral responsibilities, rests upon the home and the church and the schools, can only complement and supplement those standards which are established in the family. The decision as to whether or not any program in family life and sex education is to be introduced in the schools is a matter for determination at the local district level by the local school board of duly selected representatives of the people of the community. If such program is adopted, the legislature believes that major emphasis in such a program should be to assist the home in giving them the knowledge and appreciation of the important place the family home holds in the social system of our culture, its place in the family and the responsibility which will be there.
Can you bring that up?
Much later, when these, when they establish their own families. The program should supplement the work in the home and the church in giving youth the scientific, psychological information or physiological information for understanding sex and its relation to the miracle of life, including knowledge of the power of the sex drive and the necessity of controlling that drive by self-discipline.
Which, what is that statute?
Sixteen oh eight, thirty-three sixteen oh eight. And the program should focus upon helping youth acquire a background of ideals and standards and attitudes, which will be of value to him now and later when he chooses a mate and establishes his own family.
There you go. If the board decides that we even need anything like that.
I don't even think, I'll be honest, I don't think you need any explanation.
Yeah, I don't, I, I agree. I do think it's pertinent to uh mimic the statute. Um in, in my opinion, you know, that's, I mean, what we're here for uh is to do that, but.
I, I, you know, I think if parents have questions, they know how to ask, right?
Yeah, so health, six through twelve is just um mental and emotional health. This is IDAPA, um zero eight, zero two, zero two, ten. Um is uh mental health, human sexuality, substance abuse, blah 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 blah. And I think uh. Yeah, we can make it as simple as possible. Oh eight, oh two, what? Um oh eight, oh two, oh two. Uh, yeah, oh eight, oh two, oh two, governing rules or governing uniformity. And if we look at the health standards, and I think there's another one besides that, but we can look at that Idaho. Standards.
Well, for the purpose of this form, which um in twenty-three forty policy controversial issues and academic freedom, we state um.
So in sixth through eighth grade, they have um healthy relationships and sexuality, consequences of sexual activity, encouragement of abstinence from sexual activity, sexually transmitted disease.
Oh, actually, yes.
And methods of disease and pregnancy prevention, information should be factual, medically accurate, and objective.
And, you know, you kinda go into detail on twenty-three forty, not a lot, but enough. That speaks to that the board directs that philosophy of abstinence, and I think that's all that needs to be done. And then this is just a simple opt-in, opt-out form.
Yeah.
Cause you have the information here.
Yeah.
That's what I would recommend.
Okay. Sound good to me.
So either we're opting our child in.
Right.
Or opting our child out.
Right.
Especially if they're going together, cause they go together.
They will be going together.
Yes.
So do we want to keep on here the, I understand about the alternative educational endeavor? Cause I did actually just copy that language and move it over to policy twenty-three forty, cause it said activity.
Yeah, that's fine, so I would just move it up underneath the, right after sex education. And just make that. Just so they know that, if they send their child to school, the child will receive.
I guess I'm not following you, where do you wanna move that?
Oh, I was just saying, you might, instead making it as a paragraph, just moving the same paragraph. Make it clean and simple and clean.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so short and sweet. Okay, so twenty-three forty F is done. So going over to twenty-three forty-five. Which this is not, do we have this policy?
Yes.
Why was it never adopted?
I don't know.
Do you be willing? Oh wait, no, it is here. It just doesn't, okay, so I'm gonna draft, for whatever reason, here. Draft twenty-three forty-five. Is this the same? Oh, okay, we just did it, okay. So go ahead and move this over to this.
Is blue still the same thing, same language of?
Blue is the language. Is it IDAPA's rule, or mean ISBA's?
ISBA's, that's what I thought.
So working through policy.
This one's the branded version.
Oh, that's why.
So it's um Google Docs, right, yes, and it doesn't do that.
All speakers must be invited, must have with the school's principal approval.
The must have, the, I guess, is there a document that they get that?
Must be with is our version, and then their version is in blue.
All speakers must be with the school principal's approval. All speakers must, all speakers invited must have the school principal's approval. Okay. Got it, yeah. Um. Why? Okay, I'm thinking this whole bottom half needs to be removed, because we have a P, which is the procedure. Which if you go over to here.
Yep.
Yep. So that helps, damn, we'll have to look it up on this one. So we just have these top paragraphs, so, well, that's weird, because then that means. So did we have the blue, we, we did, right? The board encourages, yeah. Okay, so maybe from this point, Rosanna, keep our policy, and then just whatever ISBA's new language is. Put that in blue, instead of, because, yeah, because taking out the bottom half, it appears like we never had this policy except must be with. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So there wasn't much that was changed by.
ISBA.
ISBA, okay.
Oh boy.
We're on twenty-three forty-five.
Yeah, I have like three different twenty-three forty-fives open, and I still don't see what.
The draft, it'll say draft two, three, four, five. Do we, the board encourage, or does, I should say, does the board encourage the use of outside speakers? When the speaker's program is educationally sound, consistent with the curriculum, and follows district policies and procedures?
I guess it would be, I mean, from my perspective, if I put on my trustee cap, um I think there are some beneficial organizations in the, um in the community that would be good to come in and talk to the kids, you know, the fire department, police department. Um there's the nutritional gal from NIC that goes to all the schools and will do nutrition stuff and.
Yeah, subject matter.
Yeah, right, yeah, so I think those are, I mean, I, I don't see. I mean, I wouldn't discourage it, I guess would be the thing.
Okay.
You know?
Or you could say the board enables the use of outside speakers when the speaker's program is educationally sound.
Allows.
Or allows, I like enables because it's a little bit more PC than allow.
Yeah, but from a counseling perspective, you don't wanna enable people.
Oh, I am a counselor too, I was a school counselor, but when it comes to the game of semantics, when you say allow, people will go, what, you allow me? And then when you say to enable them, they're like, oh, that's so nice, you're a good. Cause there's certain people.
I think we don't have enough uh draw the line in the sand anymore. We have too much broad spectrum, everything, you know, no more, everything's uh objective truth, you know, you never subjective.
Subjective.
But allows is fine, allows is fine since then.
Cause it is policy, and that's policy speak. So all speakers invited must have the school principal's approval.
Prior to speaking engagement. Of course, I'll take one as well.
It's another word for. Do you wanna say if the subject is controversial, or when the subject is controversial?
Which one?
I'm on the second sentence.
I'm still on the first one.
Oh, gotcha.
It's funky, all invited speakers need the school principal's approval. All invited speakers must have the school prin- I think it needs to be invited speakers, oh. I don't know, to me, it just sounds weird, but it's, I guess, it's all just semantics.
Why don't we just say all speakers must have?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go. This is invitation only, and we require that you.
That's right. We are the upper crust.
Yeah, I would say when, because if leads to uh s- someone's interpretation of a. No, I don't think drag queen story hour is controversial at all. Or drag queens coming in and talking about how it could all make up.
Or reading at, you know, kindergarten. Okay, unless it's a kind of, may also decide, um.
You can just say may decide, it would give the also.
But do we want it to be optional, do we want it to be, I mean, it goes both ways, but um but then are we taking that control away from the principal?
Shouldn't it be topic and not an issue?
Good point.
I think that needs to be will be.
Will not be toward it.
Oh, no. It's a bad sentence. ISBA needs a writer. In no instance, who is speaker, comma, who is not.
Oh yeah, we are the comma police, just so you know.
Okay, unconstitutional or illegal acts, comma. Or procedures. There we go, there we go, that's better.
Yeah.
Commas are your friend.
They are.
Okay, just because I'm me, we're gonna do this. I think this just needs to go away, the whole thing, just put a period after it, cause we already designated what it was.
What is it?
Uh when a subject is controversial, the uh principal may decide to engage speakers for both sides, period.
Oh.
And just get rid of this.
Okay.
Okay.
Of a topic.
Okay.
Just put this little uh red dot in here. Oops. Yeah, it's better. There we go.
Yep.
That, that's another comment. Shall a speaker be permitted to address students? What about the speaker that represents an organization that's controversial? Like maybe the speaker isn't known with the.
Well, if we say in no instance shall a speaker be permitted to address the students who advocates unconstitutional or illegal acts or procedures.
Oh, he took, no, no, oh, okay.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, okay, period, there's a comma, there are two constitutional, legal acts or procedures.
Okay, what's that?
There's a comma and a period after procedures.
Right. Cause I was all copy and pasting. Should turn out our student from certain discussions, alternative assignment will be given. Shouldn't it be an alternative educational endeavor?
Yep.
Although that is only stated in sex education, do, does a student have to have an alternative?
You can just say activity, educational activity.
Yeah, um, I think, I think we do, there's, um, there's something in the statute too, if there, uh, because it could be asked to be removed for religious reasons, personal beliefs, whatever, and we do have to provide an alternative to that if they come and say, hey, you know, or, or are they just either an alternative, or I think in some instances, they just don't have to participate at all. Thinking like the pledge of allegiance and things like that, people don't want their kids doing.
So parents and guardians will be given the option to remove their student from certain discussions and an alternative educational endeavor will be given, period. Controversial speakers, the word I think says, uh, visiting speakers may be, uh, specific persuasions. Viewpoints.
Or viewpoints. I think ISBA uses viewpoints and our own said persuasions.
Oh, okay.
So you can choose the word.
Oh, okay. So what do I want it to say? There's not a that's in this paragraph, it's striking me, that's.
Viewpoints.
Viewpoints and their topics maybe, I'm sure, so you can take that that out. Why is this in a, in a policy?
I don't know, we, I question a lot of sometimes, cause a lot of these policies are just fluffy introductions to subjective interpretations.
If they are prohibited from speaking because of the points of view, academic freedom is endangered, wh- why, why is that even in here? That's not relevant to what the policy is about. I would take out that whole sentence. I don't understand this whole paragraph, I guess. Students need to examine issues upon which there is disagreement, to practice analyzing problems, gathering, organizing facts, discriminating between facts and opinions, discussing differing viewpoints, you can change this whole sentence around to where it pulls up into the paragraph, um, the, the intro paragraph.
Well, I think they are trying to address controversial speakers because, you know, some people might think that, uh, you know, a certain person who's labeled, you know, highly conservative is controversial, or highly liberal is controversial, or you know, somebody that wears the color purple versus the color blue, so I think there has to be some, you know, if you look at it broadly, some definition that, yeah, we're, you know, the district isn't gonna make the decision to in most instances, to, you know, just hack the people off at the knees and say, no, you're not talking.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I, I just don't understand that sentence right there. If they are prohibited, because it makes it sound like.
Oh. Well, that's their thing, yeah.
It's automatically prohibited and that's not, it, it, I don't know, it just doesn't belong in the, in the sentence, in my opinion, or in the paragraph.
I'm just breaking these down.
Yes, well, they're, they're, um, they're, uh, you can tell who it's written by, they're backing their point of view. Everything's about academic freedom.
No, I, 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 yeah, I, I understand that, I'm just thinking that sentence doesn't even belong, it doesn't, it stands out.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, yep. We didn't, we had the academic freedom discussion last time, it's like, what is?
Okay, so we wanna take this sentence out?
It doesn't make sense. Because nobody's prohibi- do you see what I'm saying, like, this is about, um, nobody's prohibiting it and it's, it's automatically assumed.
This is why we're allowing it and how it's allowed.
Yes, exactly. And then you, the students need to examine is, is giving the rationale behind why we would allow controversial speakers to begin with. Students need to examine issues upon which there is disagreement and to practice. I would like to put critical thinking into that sentence.
I know, it's like, we could sum this all up. Um.
So the board encourages students to use critical thinking and examine issues upon which there is disagreement and to practice analyzing problems, gathering, or organizing facts, discriminating between facts and opinions, which, I mean, all of that is critical thinking.
Right.
I mean, we could just say the board encourages stu- to use critical thinking, period, um. I don't know if we need to.
You could say the board encourages students to use critical thinking, um, when examining issues where, you can say disagreement or controversial again. You can just say controversial issues too.
Yeah, I take up everything up to the word discriminating. I might have to kind of fill in, maybe if you took that out and then facts and opinions, yeah, but I take all the discriminating and then I take out, um, the discussing differing viewpoints.
Okay.
I, um, issues by discriminating between.
I don't like the word tentative.
Don't like what?
I always, yes, 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 thank you, I was gonna say the wrong, but yeah.
Uh, the board encourages students to use critical thinking when examining controversial issues, discriminating between facts and opinions, and drawing independent conclusions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate.
While drawing independent, you know, conclusions. Or, I don't know.
Cause they, yeah.
Well. When examining, uh, encourages students to use critical thinking when examining controversial issues, discriminating between facts and opinions, and drawing, yeah, okay, that's fine, I agree.
What's citizenship education?
Something we used to do.
Oh, okay.
We don't do it anymore. It left education a long time ago. In my opinion anyways, well, I guess in a lot of people's opinion, and even some of those have been in the industry forever and a day. We don't, um, educate to citizenship anymore.
We are.
I know a constitution has features in it that say we have to.
We have a statement, uh, the board recognizes many topics are not suitable for young or less mature state students ended. I mean, it was just a statement, but I think it needs to be elaborated on that, you know, we recognize this. So there needs to be consi- if you're considering a speaker in our topic, you need to think about the younger students and less mature students, and even if it's a consider, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking this and it shouldn't be.
You could pull up the sentence. To make it work better.
Are you considering, considering, considering and consideration, um.
Evaluating, when evaluating a speaker's topic. Controversial.
Did you pull up the source?
I did.
Yeah, that's why like Microsoft Word gives it to you.
I'm not a fan of Google.
No, me neither. Here, if it has. Oh.
Here, I have Google, I don't use it anywhere else.
There's your, oh, you guys can't see it.
What?
Oh, I'm telling you, if you highlight the word, right click on it, and then choose, uh, evaluate, oh, that's because that's the front of the screen. Um, do you see define evaluating?
Yeah, it just gives you the definition of.
But it gives you a bunch, it gives you synonyms also to the word.
But it kind of pops up in a pop-up, right?
Yeah, it's cinnamon, cinnamon, assessments, yeah, assess, assess the.
It's not as eloquent as Microsoft Word. Doesn't give me enough, like in Microsoft Word, I, I, you know, gives you like eight, five, eight, and then you can go in and get more, and then you can put in more, and get more.
Go down the synonym rabbit hole.
Yes, you can, I was just about to say that, it takes you down a synonym rabbit hole.
Next thing you know, you spent like a half hour on a little paragraph trying to get it worded right.
That's exactly what I'm doing right at the moment.
That's exactly what I do.
Um, okay, so I'm now like, cause you talked about flipping it, which I thought, oh, that's a great idea. But now it's, you know, it's not a board dealio, um.
Oh, wasn't there instruction to teachers somewhere, no, the board encourages?
Oh, is it in the procedures?
Probably.
Okay. Oh, so we took all this out and put it in a procedure, I see.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. When correctly handled, the use of controversial speakers becomes an invaluable component in accomplishing the goals of citizenship education. However, this places a serious responsibility on the professional staff members to correctly structure the learning situation involving a speaker. Does that paragraph need to be stated? I mean, to start it off with when correctly handled, that means we're stating, sometimes you don't do it right, so, but, so then why are we even making this statement?
Well, I, I, I agree with that, and then again, I go back to, I asked the question of what's citizenship education, is that even relevant?
Yeah, so citizenship education.
And then talking about a, a serious responsibility for the professional staff, that's a heavy, that's a heavy little paragraph.
I'm striking it.
What do you think about it?
Yeah, I mean, the citizenship education is required by Idaho statute anyways, so, and what that has to deal with, it's political. It's all about your country and the pledge of allegiance and the flag and the forms of government, and you know, those things we used to learn all through school that makes you a good citizen, you know.
Yeah, it's global citizen, though.
Yeah, not me.
But then everything is.
Right, right.
It's global citizenship.
Global everything, global economy, global citizenship, global. Um, believe it or not, the Seattle School District has a pretty good controversial issues in speakers and it's, uh, three paragraphs.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Do I have to show the class?
They don't abide by it.
Yeah, it's, uh, policy twenty-three thirty-one, oh, you can just look at, yeah.
Twenty-three thirty-one?
Yeah, twenty-three thirty-one, yep, yep, there it is. Yeah, twenty-three thirty-one, yep, yep, there it is.
Oh, actually, I like that opening uh sentence.
Yeah.
That it accomplishes the one sentence about uh.
And it says that um we would say the board encourages staff members or staff to provide free and orderly flow on examination by.
I like the purple one, though.
To study under teachers.
That was actually in our other policy and then we struck it out. It was in twenty-three um forty-five.
What, what part did we strike out?
Um, studying under teachers, cause we're like, what?
Oh.
Oh, so this comes from the International School Board Association then? Cause that that last paragraph is pretty much the one that we took out, different viewpoints, analyzing problems, tentative conclusions.
Yeah. Right.
Actually, the second paragraph, teachers shall guide discussions and procedures, including the use of guest speakers to gain.
Divergent points of views.
Actually, you could, if you wanted to keep the stuff in about age appropriateness, you could say teacher, um.
Can you scroll uh down a little bit on that?
Yeah, that's good.
Oh, there you go, that sentence, teachers will exercise professional judgment to determine the appropriateness of the issue to the curriculum and not charity of students. Why do you have to go through the soup?
Yeah, typically, I mean, it'd be a you know, or they're designee and the superintendent would just say, oh, well, the principal can decide on that or not, but I could see where you would want the superintendent to have some understanding of who's speaking in the district just for liability purposes, you know?
Agreed.
I mean, at least to be aware of who's on your campuses, you know?
True. Oh, check, oh, that's the procedure though down below, isn't it?
Uh, I don't see, scroll down a little bit.
Yeah, that's the procedure, kind of. Oh, but we, you have, all this is on here, so.
Mm-hmm, can you scroll up a bit, stop?
Well, they could have copied and pasted that before you had it on as you were typing it all. When you have this little surprise, when I pulled that up, I thought, huh, that's pretty good policy. Shocking.
Okay, so. So I added those, but I'm curious if the, some of these might be over in the procedure.
They are.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay, well, good to know.
Are you gonna need to plug in Michelle or are you good, do you think?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good. That's about two hours, thirty-four minutes.
Cause the first one is selection of speakers and topics must be um age and grade level appropriate.
Okay. Um.
Um. The teacher, sponsor and school building administrator shall investigate fully those proposed resource persons for whom the community may.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we don't need to include this.
Yep, probably not.
Okay, I'm not highlighting.
Actually, I don't even know if you need to.
I'm just gonna highlight it until we work through the procedures to make sure they say.
I don't even know if you need the board recognizes many topics are not suitable, cause it's the number one here.
Okay. So let me take that out, oops.
Or highlight it with the other.
Well, I just wanna. Okay, so I'll highlight that, cause possibly we'll just strike through, take out the red and strike through the rest, okay? So looking here at the procedures. Which will automatically separate and exclude as a resource that person whose views or manners are personally that may actually obstruct the education. What? No overall standard can be established, which will automatically separate and exclude as a resource, the person whose views or manner of presenting them may actually obstruct the educational process or endanger the health and safety of students or staff. What is that really saying?
That's a big sentence.
It is.
That makes absolutely no sense.
So is it saying that that above all, a speaker can't come in and obstruct the educational process and endanger the health and safety of students or staff? See, I don't know that I read that, because it's saying no standard can be established. So we cannot prevent someone else from presenting material that may obstruct the educational process or endanger the health and safety of staff and students.
Yeah, that's not true.
Uh.
We're gonna let.
What, then why the policy?
Well, no, 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 I hear you, but I mean, I could totally be reading this wrong, but it's saying no overall standard can be established.
Right. Right, I see that, yeah, which is not true, we are establishing a standard.
Right.
And we do hold a standard and we're not gonna, okay, you know, the, what do they call themselves, the NIMBLA or whatever, the Man Boy Love Association?
Yeah, they can't come, yeah.
Or TNS, TNSN.
Yeah, they can't come here and talk.
Okay, so we're just gonna strike that out, because
It is our job.
We're, it's con, it's conflicting with what we're actually doing.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so.
That's that legal speak.
Yeah. Yeah. The board, in an effort to uphold students' freedom to learn while also recognizing obligations, which the exercise of this freedom entails establishes the following rules.
Uh, uh, is it, should you say rules and procedures? Cause we do say it is a procedure, right?
Well, let's then uh call it rules, let's call it procedure.
There you go.
It's be appropriate to behave in grade level students, election of speaker and topics. Should they congruent with the curriculum of the course or function? Should be congruent with the curriculum of the course or function, function of what?
I guess the function of the curriculum, you can strike that though, I would imagine.
Or do they mean a school function?
Oh. That's, that's what it is. So you're gonna put school in there?
The teacher slash sponsor and school building administrator shall investigate fully those proposed resource persons for whom the community may question the wisdom of his or her presence. What?
Well, I, I was, that one is a head scratcher.
The teacher, oh my lord, the teacher slash sponsor or designee must give one week prior notification to the principal or designee. Notification of what? The principal or designee may waive the one week notification requirement if extending circumstances are present.
Ooh.
For what?
For the, the, the controversial speaker.
No. Minimal disruption of the normal flow of school operation is a high priority. Oh my gosh. An attempt to provide a balance of viewpoints is recommended when dealing with controversial issues or candidates for public office. We're not allowed to have that on these grounds.
Have that. Well, okay, wait, wait, so, uh.
Number six.
Mayor, um.
Holmes?
No, I don't know, Spirit Lake's mayor comes and does story out with the kids.
Convergently. Um.
In Jeffrey.
Yeah, but.
He's not.
He's not a candidate, he is the public officer now.
Where.
Yeah, we're not allowed to have that on.
No, no, oh, no, candidates, you're right, okay, I missed, yeah, that's absolutely no, no.
Especially given that, you know, only a select portion of senior class can be it would apply to, cause you know the majority of the high school is not eighteen and has the voting privileges yet.
Right, but what if a candidate came and talked to them about just the, just being a candidate and what that process is like? Like how you run for office and would they, I mean, not that they're soliciting votes, but what if they're you know, ex, sharing the experience of being a candidate?
Is, are there debate clubs that would debate possible issues that would be able to invite candidates to speak about the other process?
I don't remember seeing um debating clubs on the. I'm just curious, why did they put that in there? Back in the day, we used to kind of.
Well, cause I did not think the schools.
Oh, wait, 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 could it be so like, for example, up in Spirit Lake? Um, they use the middle school for after hours for candidate debates and town halls during election time? Is it maybe was somebody thinking that they had inserted in that due to that or?
Oh, for.
It's not a school function though, it's not a school function, they're just utilizing our voting.
I don't know.
I don't think they have any debates. Just sports.
Just sports. Alright, so this is three, four I highlighted because they make no sense to me and I don't know what we're trying to say.
Teacher, school administration should investigate those proposed resource persons for whom, oh my word, somebody who really likes to talk.
Yeah, and it surprises me at the moment.
What, may question those issues or what, persons?
Uh-huh. And I don't know who a resource person is, from the community.
Well, that's. Not only that, I mean, come on, really? The, I mean, the whole point is we're talking about controversial issues, so they're saying somebody that's controversial in the community, if they're coming to speak, they should be investigated first to make sure that they're not? Well, yeah, that's what the whole policy is over, because somebody thinks that you're, um, that that's the whole thing, may question the wisdom of his or her presence. I mean, the whole point, yeah, I would just take it out, at least number three.
Well, the thing is, is I don't know who a resource person is, I mean, what is that intending?
Yeah.
Didn't we have it?
This is the first time that this has been.
First time I.
It was actually on the policy.
Oh, it was on the policy.
Yeah. The prior people who just had it off these things without reading them, so we don't know if they understood or didn't. Yeah, we were, uh.
Um, one week seems a bit uh of a quick turnaround, I would imagine, for a speaker engagement. I mean, to be honest, through booking a speaker, you could have done that once in a time, I mean, is a one week prior notification to the principal appropriate?
Yeah. I mean, just to notify the principal, you know, they could have already made the you know, talk to the speaking person, you know, I think that's plenty of time, it should be.
Well, I mean, to approve.
I mean, I don't know, ask them, see, we can ask, ask Lisa, to ask them.
Okay, so, cause I don't know whether a sponsor is or a designee, so if a teacher must give one week prior notification to the principal. The principal may waive the one week notification if extending circumstances are present. So we're talking about the teacher must give one week notification to the principal of a controversial speaker?
That's what I interpreted.
Okay, then we need that to say that.
But I would imagine that if you want a controversial speaker approved that uh one week, I would least give thirty days. Well, in all fairness.
I mean, I don't have our principles.
Yeah, I, well, as far as the ones that I'm familiar with, I think they're all uh trying to do the best job possible, but um we should give, what about, as a compromise, do you want thirty days, what if we said two weeks?
Oh, yeah, two weeks is fine. I just think one week is, can be a quick turnaround, just in case something jumps off at schools, which they usually do.
What do you think about that?
I think it would be fine, cause we're not saying, all we're saying is that the teachers notifying, um, I mean, I guess it depends on what, what we think the procedure is of the notification, whatever we expect it to be, I mean, if I went to the principal and said, hey, I'm gonna have, you know, Sally Jo come talk about, you know, burgers and fries, you know? And the principal said, okay, well, now we gotta send forms to parents, can their kids be in class when we talk about burgers and fries? You know, so that, you know.
Except, in all fairness, burgers and fries is not controversial.
Yeah, well, just depending on where those burgers and fries came from now.
However. I mean, it may be controversial. Oh, but like, I think and I don't know if this should just be controversial speakers procedures, I think it needs to be every speaker procedure, because um you know, we had the incident at the high school with someone who came regarding health.
Right. Right.
Okay, no parent was given a notice that this was gonna happen, no one knew and whatever that speaker dude was talking about obviously didn't align with the curriculum, and so I think it's there has to be a time period where it's like, yeah, I want this, how do you not know that you're gonna want a speaker?
Yeah, I guess part of, right, I guess part of my thing in the principal, I don't know what is fully aware of, but it was not either, yeah.
He was not, because of the whole changing of arms and, I mean, that situation, I understood how. He was not, because of those changing of arms and, I mean, that situation, I understood how that kind of fell apart.
Right, yeah.
But I don't want it to fall apart again.
So here's, here's me, and I'm just gonna be the devil's advocate.
Okay.
I'm a teacher with an agenda, I see this procedure, and I'm gonna see that the principal may waive the one week requirement extending circumstances are present, might be able to ma- get that extending circumstance present where, I, I mean, I don't know what the approval process looks like. I would imagine the approval process is longer than a week.
Right, well, here's the thing is that, um, I agree with him, the extenuating circumstances, I didn't like, but we haven't got there yet, um. We have to be careful that we're not jumping over the line of governance, is the thing, we cannot write the procedure for staff.
Right.
That's not what we do, that's not what policy does.
So then, can you just take out the timeline and say the teacher must give notification to the principal or designee? Because obviously the schools have their own procedures for bringing in a speaker or what have you.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, from my perspective and, you know, thinking as a, a board member, what we're trying to do is make sure that enough advanced notice is given so that the principal and parents can be, you know, duly, yeah, noted, informed, whatever.
So. You can add that in.
Right. That's really what we're trying to do, so whether that's a week, two weeks, you know, however long that process takes, and it might be different in every school, you know?
So then, maybe the teacher must give.
Or we could just say notification must be given, um, to the principal.
In advance?
Yeah, well, well, obviously.
Or as required by school procedures? Doesn't even need to be in here.
Yeah, I do think we need to say that there's, you have to give enough notice to where parents, you know, so that the principal and the parents are aware. Um, well, I think you have to have principal approval and then the parental notification, um. So we need to word it so there's enough, enough time for that to happen.
Yeah, the, the policy twenty-three forty-five, you guys have put here that it, um, must have the school principal's approval.
Right.
And, and that's, I think, where I was going, is that here it's just notification, it's off from like, they need approval.
Right, well, we already said that though in the policy, this is the procedure to get the approval, and the procedure to get the approval means you just have to give enough notification that the parents and the, and the, um, you know, so that the parents can respond again.
Alright, so, the teacher must give notification to the principal and parents prior to engaging a speaker.
For their students or for the classroom?
Teacher must give notification. Yeah, maybe it should say, uh, the teacher must notify the principal for approval. Uh, parents must, yeah, can't think.
So a teacher must notify the principal and parents of the intent to have a speaker prior to engaging a speaker with the students.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Cause now that, yeah, yeah, cause like, Spirit Lake will send out, um, will notify us of movies that they're presenting to the kids.
That's required. That is in policy.
Yep, we wrote that specifically.
Cause, uh, yeah. Uh, minimal disruption to the normal flow of school operation is required. I didn't know if we should say expected, because that implies that, you know, it might not happen. Um, an attempt to provide a balance of viewpoints is recommended when dealing with controversial issues. A person who encourages or advocates breaking the law will be invited to speak.
Didn't we already say that somewhere?
Probably. Teachers should ensure that, should ensure the presentation and follow-up is consistent with district-approved programs and policies. Follow-up for what?
Follow-up of the presentation?
Follow-up is pertaining to, yeah.
I don't know. The teacher must retain primary responsibility for the instruction and supervision of the students when using an outside speaker.
So you put, uh, in there, it's not there, when you read it, you said, uh, students?
Oh, supervision of students when using an outside speaker, the teacher must be present at all times when speakers are in the classroom. Prior to his or her appearance or participation, the proposed speaker shall be given in writing and shall agree to abide by the following regulations. Shall agree to, like, profanity, vulgarity, and lewd comments are prohibited, tobacco, alcohol, or drug use is prohibited, and the teacher sponsor, I don't like this word, sponsor.
Is it, could it be in reference to clubs?
I don't know. The teacher responsible, sponsor responsible for inviting, no, it would have to come from a teacher, because a speaker has to be, um, targeted towards our curriculum or, you know.
Who's the resource person?
I don't know, I don't even know what that is in consideration of this.
That's in the first part of twenty-three forty-five P. Um, it says it right here.
That we struck out?
Yes, that you struck out here. Our resource, oh, excuse me, as a resource, the person.
Uh, the statement was, no overall standard can be established which will automatically separate and exclude as a resource the person whose use.
Oh my gosh, they actually did that? You really think that's what it is?
Yes, I really think that's what it is.
Oh my gosh, that's so bad. Should it be just the, the speaker instead of the resource person?
Yeah.
Why would you continuously change names like that?
They do it all the time, it drives us nuts, couldn't, and we'll have to reread stuff, it's like, well, what are they talking about now?
Because.
And then it's like, oh, you mean it's the same thing?
Cause I was gonna say, I know in larger school districts, especially in California, the resource person is part of the sped, um, team.
Yeah, or we used to call resource officers the actual, you know, or whatever, I mean, yeah, resource.
Like, the resource person would be the person that, uh.
Gopher.
Either a gopher or they might provide, like, the resources, like a king for walking.
Mm-hmm.
That type of resource person, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think sponsor is on there because the policy talks about, um, all speakers invited must have the school principal's approval, so it doesn't specify that teachers have to request anything on the policy.
Well, all speakers must have the principal, school principal's approval prior to the speaking engagement.
So you're saying that there could be a sponsor that wants to bring us?
Mm-hmm.
I, yeah, I don't think that ever is gonna happen, well, actually, it does happen in certain school districts, I should say that.
Well, the teacher can sponsor somebody. But yeah, there's.
Okay, so the teacher responsible for inviting the resource person or?
The speaker.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it is, it is this time.
Thank you. So I'm trying to figure out why we're bouncing around with our words again. For inviting a speaker and any member of the school administration has the right and duty to interrupt or suspend any proceedings if the conduct of the speaker is judged to be in poor taste or endangering, okay, so, this is, yeah, there are some notes here. Alright, so the teacher's responsible for inviting the speaker.
I think that can all just go away and say any member of the school administration.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Or school staff or whatever has the right and duty to interrupt or suspend, I mean, anybody, it shouldn't matter, whether it's the teacher or the principal or whomever, if there's somebody, um. Or staff, I guess you could state.
Okay. So any member of the school administration has the right or?
Or staff. Cause a school admin is, would be just the principal and stuff, so what if it?
Well, go ahead.
Okay, so any member of school administration or staff. Or staff has the right, or the, has the right and duty to interrupt or suspend any proceedings if the conduct of the speaker is judged to be in poor taste or endangering the safety of students and stuff. In the event an outside community speaker is denied access to the classroom, the teacher may request a meeting be held with the superintendent, the principal, and the teacher, okay, but the teacher's requesting the, okay, and the teacher, okay, yeah. Meeting shall be held no later than five working days from the date of the request for the meeting. The administrators shall review the teach, with the teacher pertinent information concerning request and render a final decision on the issue.
Would you say a final decision? Right, I mean.
Because honestly, and you're final decision. I, I guess what I'd like to know, I kinda don't like this paragraph.
Yeah, I sorta don't either, because it just, well, for one, it never gets to the board. But anyways, go ahead, why, why don't you?
Okay, cause we're talking about the procedures to have a speaker. Well, controversial speaker, so it shouldn't even be controversial, it should just be speaker procedures, but in the policy, I think we state, um.
No, it does say speakers in the classroom and at school functions. And then there's a separate paragraph on controversial speakers.
Right. Well, because they might have a speaker at a school function.
Right.
Um, but bottom line is, is not all speakers are controversial, so these procedures need to be followed regardless if it's a controversial or not a controversial.
Right, yeah, I agree, yep.
Okay, so.
So you could just rename the procedures to match this. Speakers in the classroom procedure?
The title.
Yeah. Unless you're on a bit school function.
Speakers. Speakers. Yeah. Because this applies to all speakers.
Right, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that is correct, cause even the speaker that, uh, came to the school initially wasn't perceived as quote controversial, but the controversial subjects came up.
Correct.
And had there been something where, um, yeah, that could have sort of been stopped before it started.
Right. Um, so in the event a speaker is denied access to the classroom, um. Classroom. The teacher may request a meeting be held between the superintendent, the designee, and the teacher. The meeting shall be held no later than five working days from the date of the request for the meeting. The administrator shall review the teacher, shall, oh, shall review with the teacher pertinent information concerning the request and final decision. Okay. Because, I mean, bottom line in my opinion is if a principal doesn't want to get speakers in their school, regardless of content issue, whatever alignment, I think they should have the right to say, no, we're not going there.
Right.
And that's the end of the discussion. Um, and I believe the teacher could potentially take it up to the superintendent and have a meeting with the superintendent and principal to plead their case, but I don't think there needs to be, um.
A procedure for it?
No. Just that, you know, if you wanna advocate for something, go for it, but if the principal says no, then, you know, I don't know. Okay, so. Do we think it's sufficient?
Who did we decide on the um? Just keeping it consistent with the other policies, you know, the whole calendar days, working days and school days. I guess working days is sufficient for this, huh? My working days.
Okay, so these adequate.
I think so.
Alright, so we went beyond our thirty minutes, but it's all done. It can all go out for um.
Review?
Yeah.
Stakeholder input?
Yeah.
Do we?
Yeah, that's. So then, public comments, the next one.
How long is our meeting?
Seven, ten minutes. But I believe.
Wow, really? We're only supposed to give this thirty and thirty and an hour, or is it us?
Yeah, that's what we do.
I mean.
Cause we're super, super humans.
Yeah, this thirty two eighty one is gonna take a full meeting.
Which one?
The gender identity and sexual orientation.
Yeah, we're only giving that for an hour.
Yeah.
One hour.
Yeah.
Toss.
That's good looking.
But the public comment, I believe there's just the one issue that Rosanna has.
Oh.
Um, on it.
Okay.
Uh. So if we brought that out. Um. What's up with blue?
Blue is ISBAs, uh, they did a recent update.
Oh, they did?
Mm-hmm.
Well, of course we did. School board meetings have gotten out of hand.
Where is ours?
Here's our current policy right here.
Yeah, cause we. We did a lot, a lot of work on that policy, I would rather not, I really don't care what ISBA said, to tell you the truth.
ISBA is gonna go with what um national, what with, right?
Not necessarily, they have several attorneys that write, that's why they're all over the board, because they literally have multiple people simultaneously working on these.
So my, my issue personally as the clerk of the board is the written materials.
Right.
Three days prior, the agenda stating, oh, go ahead, submitted by twelve new. Um, I inquired at an ISBA webinar I attended about written materials and they said, I asked, is written materials just, you know, attachments, is it just there, they just public comment and they said they use it interchangeably?
Well, then, I mean, we need to determine what written materials are.
Right, yeah, we don't care what ISBA says.
And then also another thing is um that I heard at the convention was um if your policy says it's, they have, the public comments have to be made in regards to an item on the agenda. And you, that's what your policy states, it, it can be perceived if you start cutting them off, if they're going off on a ramp, and I, I, I don't wanna talk about some of the previous speakers, but you know, like if somebody comes in and talks about something that's really left wing out there, nothing related to the school at all, um. And you try to curtail them speaking, you know, that can be perceived as you, you know, picking and choosing who you allow to speak. So, I would like for either matters on the agenda to be, you know, consistent, like that's what they have to speak about, or, or if, or if the board wants to allow them to speak about any, anything, then it should state, they should be able to speak about anything. I just wanna be consistent.
Yeah, that first sentence of the second paragraph was um due to the past superintendence.
Yeah.
Um, but I am a firm believer that I think people should be able to kind of speak.
Right.
Regardless of what's on the agenda, because we don't know what they want to have addressed unless they tell us, and if we keep avoiding them, that's just not appropriate.
Right. Right.
Uh, how much time do you have?
They're lots of fun.
Yeah, I have my own working that I do it then, so. Um, how much time, um?
Three minutes.
Three, how mu, okay, so how many, I guess maybe I should say this, public input time, what is the designated time slot for that?
There's no time.
It's in the beginning, yeah.
Oh, there's no time, no.
No, we have public input and people can speak for three minutes, the policy does go in um and address the fact that, you know, if multiple people are coming to talk about the same subject, then get a guest speaker and just choose the information, just, we'll give you ten minutes to surmise everybody's input.
Yeah.
Um, but generally, I mean, like, at the last board meeting, we had uh four emails that were all on the same topic. Sometimes we've had three or four people come in and speak to the same thing. So, and it's, um, yeah, so. I.
Ooh, excuse me.
Um, I don't mind, because we don't have heavily participated meetings, meaning tons of people don't come unless there's an issue that they feel that they need to be heard on. Um, we've never like spent a half an hour on public comment.
Okay.
At best, it's been like maybe fifteen minutes, cause I do try to keep everyone to three minutes. I can say occasionally a few people have gone over. But I also don't believe that people need to be cut off mid-sentence because three minutes is up when they're almost over. You know, I, but I will, there have been times when they've taken a breath, it's like, okay.
Well, the policy explicitly states do that the chair could at any time tell them they're done.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, that is the um prerogative of the chair.
So I.
So what did you wanna fix, Rosanna? So what is the problem with the written materials thing?
Yes, so my problem is the interpretation of what is considered written materials. Is it a, just a public comment, an email, I want you to give this to the board, is that
Yeah.
a written material, or is that public comment, and do we interpret, are they the same thing, is public comment written material, or is written material
Well, it could be.
uh presentation, PDF file or something?
It's all those things, everything you just said.
Yeah.
So, if they send the email, if they write a note, if they, that's all written material, if they get a group and wanna come present and they got a PowerPoint and all that, that's written material, if they've got research they wanna share, that's written material, so any, anything electronic or.
Mail?
Paper is written material, yeah.
And we need to clarify that, and I am concerned about that, because if we're requiring people that have comments to send an email three days prior to the meeting, but the agenda's being posted on Monday and the meeting's on Wednesday, we're not giving them three days to write that email.
Right.
So, I don't.
Well, in this one, maybe we should define this, because this was specifically, this here, if we're talking about this paragraph, this was specifically, we crafted this specifically for um presentations.
Correct.
Yeah, this is, so we need to change the name then, we need to call it uh.
Presented.
Or presentation materials.
Well, presentation or supporting documentation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have.
That's really what this is, supporting documentation.
Correct, I agree. But that's not clear to the person reading it.
Yeah, well, let's change it, if it's not easy.
So.
Presentation.
No, no, no. Can you take this document quickly and convert it, or and, and make a new draft, because that other draft is just a nightmare.
Sure.
Okay.
I bombed it.
Just cause I don't wanna mark on this one because of our other, whatevers we've got going on, so let's.
I'm writing new, because I think I already have a draft in, and I don't want to. Let's make sure this is in the right spot here.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we've got.
Okay.
Do I do that? Why does it just give me, oh, okay. Draft. What did you call it?
Oh, supporting documentation?
No, no, what, uh, draft new?
And presentation materials. Draft new forty one oh five, you're in it, I think, or I saw you in it.
Yeah, Ramona's in it.
Oh, Ramona, oh, let me send this to you.
Ramona's in it, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Or if you just search the draft.
I did, and it's not showing me a draft new.
Oh.
But then again, I'm a little special when it comes to this sort of stuff, so we all know. Um.
Oh, man.
Did you say we're special?
Did you say we're special?
Oh, God, please don't.
No.
No, I said it, Jean.
I, I believe you, Paul, I'm not saying anything. Saying I'm a little inept here. So we'll go here. Draft new, found it.
Okay.
Found it in the draft. Okay, so this will be. Presentation in what?
Supporting documents.
Supporting documents.
Presentation materials.
So just to clarify, so if they send an email that they want.
There's an undo up there.
That they want me to share with the board for a board meeting, that's considered written materials?
No.
No.
If it is. Email is considered public participation.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep. But we would obviously still have to get it, I mean, you still gotta forward us the email.
Correct, yeah, we can't have a, um, well.
And in that instance, yeah, if they send the email and say, please share this with the board at the meeting, then it needs to be attached to the agenda also for public, so the public can read it.
Okay, but if, if they send it after the meeting's been posted.
Uh, that's fine, it's public comment.
It's public comment, so I could still attach it afterwards?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, 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 cause it's public comment.
Yeah, okay.
So, presentation materials and supporting documentation, um, board members must be submitted to the board clerk, um. Okay, no, don't check. Oh, damn it. All material must include, I don't know, a lot of copy of the materials, um, I think, um. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna take this sentence out. So public participation shall be heard during public input. Okay. So it doesn't have to state regarding agenda items. Oh, where's the thingy? Actually, this needs to be first. And this. Oh, wait, let me come back. No. Where did it go? I'm trying to find the thing.
What's this thing called?
It's called, no, oh, that's called here, Jan twenty twenty one, did it glance?
The glance. I'm wondering. Oh, the glance.
Okay, so the form draft, we pop them down the way up, maybe we can be done with it. Only running five over, cause yeah, we took out, oh, why did you, okay. Are you, you on the draft remote?
I am.
Can, can we see ours?
The current version?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, it's right here.
Forty one oh five F, oh, there we go.
Oh, the. There we go.
What are you looking for, Michelle?
I'm wondering if there's anything that needs to be changed on here at all.
It does say regarding agenda items in that first. Oh, actually, no, I took that back, it just includes everything.
Nope. See, the board of trustees encourages input from the public regarding agenda items, um.
It's fine.
Well, we could just take that part out.
Follows an agenda.
So do you want, uh, can you make this a copy? So we can just take that one little thing out.
Below at the next page, it says all individuals returning before the board and addressing an agenda item are expected to follow these guidelines.
Yeah, so we need to take those too. Alright, so let me brush.
Yeah, cause we did say in there, the public wants to address something non-identified on the agenda, submit a completed form to board clerk for future agenda considerations. That was number six.
I'm calling this draft two forty one oh five out. And the update that, um, the main update that ISBA did was to give a hierarchy of who should. who should speak first, who should be given time first to speak.
Oh. Really?
Yeah, like students, you know, who should be given priority over, you know, outside entities.
Here it is. Draft new. Although here on the form, it does say written comments must include name, address, and telephone number.
Mm-hmm.
Getting the link, this link goes here. Oops. Okay, so that is how many it takes us to. Okay, so we can take I N G off too, or six.
Okay.
Okay, and then I have to find that, um, what's the main form that we just did.
So you'd have to fill these out, I can't just show up at a board meeting and speak.
No, then we'll make you fill out a paper copy.
Oh, okay, okay, so there is.
Yeah, there's paper copies provided, and nine times out of ten, it's just a person's name, that's I don't know what they're gonna speak to. But they give their name.
Yeah, and the problem is this too, is that we don't have any way to follow up, because nobody gives us
Yeah.
any, it's like, if the board starts talking, it's like, yeah, I wonder, what about this? I don't know, can, can you get ahold of that person? Well, nobody knows how to get ahold of them, because we don't have any every other uh political subdivision in the state, in most places, you have to identify yourself, you have to give your name, your phone number, blah, 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 you know. So that, um, people can get ahold of them. If they have questions about what they were talking about. Can be quite frustrating when people are like, you know, it's like, okay, but we need a discussion, it's more than just, you know, one thing.
That would be dogs.
Where are you saying that there's a hierarchy?
They would be dogs.
Oh, in the, in the new, she was saying that, that students should be able to go first, and there's a hierarchy, but I don't see it.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. Yes.
On the forum?
Uh, yes, on the policy, I believe.
Oh, the policy?
Let me see, yes, let me see, here's your eyes. Oh. No, it's not.
Which one?
Must be the form.
It's not on the form either. Oh, it is on page two of forty-one oh five ISBA, October twenty twenty-two. The board shall ensure that members of following groups listed in no particular order are given priority to participate in non-stupid in-board meetings. The following groups, okay, students who attend the district, parents and guardians of students, district employees, and people who recite within the district.
Well, I think here's the, here's the, uh. Yeah, I, I don't, anybody should be able to say, if you, you're in the district and you have a relative in the district, you know.
Right, let's get real creative. Did you do something to the, the form?
Um, no, I just, I was updating the links on the uh that document.
Oh, okay, perfect.
To make sure that when we go back, the January add a glance, yeah, I added the new, the draft new, and then I was gonna add the draft two.
Add a glance, okay.
So we have that for the form, so it's on there also.
Sweet, so we actually went fifteen minutes too long, and we accomplished the two thirty-minute segments. So that's good.
Yeah.
It is progress. But that's a lot that can go out to the public.
Yes.
And then, at the next meeting, we can work on the um sexual orientation and gender identity policy thing.
I thought use of animals was already done.
Nope, that one is supposed to get done as well, I don't know why it's cause that was supposed to go out with the therapy dog.
Yeah.
But I don't think it, I don't think it did.
Oh, okay.
Because we, it was too long, and trying to get it done and uphold up the other thing, but that one still needs to be done.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Okay. So I. Updated that January at a glance to include uh those new forms.
Okay, thank you.
Draft new and draft two, oh, did I put draft two? No.
This should've been a priority at this meeting as well.
What's that?
The duties of the treasurer, because we have to appoint the treasurer at the next meeting.
Oh, crap. Where's that one at?
Um, it's at the bottom.
Yeah.
Um. For the January eighteenth meeting, but we have to appoint that treasurer this next week.
Next week's our first meeting, yep.
Yes, next Wednesday, and there's a lot, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at the agenda yet, it's long already.
Alright, well, we will call this meeting closed, and we'll end it.